I would like to call the December 8, 2022 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I'd like to ask Tucker Green if he will give the indication, please. Would you all please stand?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings in our lives, Lord. We thank you for the day you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve students and serve our community. Lord, we ask you give us guidance and wisdom as we go through this meeting here tonight and through the remainder of the school year. Keep our school district safe. Keep every family here safe. Bless us through this holiday season. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Holland.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I like that motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is recognitions. And those will be led and itemized by Destiny Show.
Good evening, members of the boards, guests in attendance. Each year at their conference, the Georgia Association of School Personnel Administrators recognizes members of their organization who stand out amongst their peers. This year, the Silver Award of Excellence was presented to the Pickens County School District and Mr. Chris Parker for winning Best in Class in the area of website development. Mr. Parker has done an excellent job in streamlining and organizing the personnel webpage for Pickens County School District. So, Mr. Parker, if you will come forward to accept this award.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We're doing good pictures.
We're doing some standing there.
Yeah, well, I mean, I need pictures.
Yeah, just face them while they take the picture.
If you haven't had a chance to check out the webpage, you need to do so. We're also hiring bus drivers. Mr. Parker can pick you up. It is my honor this evening to introduce you to the recipient of the Georgia Foundation for Public Education and Rural Education Fund $10,000 grant winner. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Hillary Tatum and Tate Elementary School. If you will, please come forward. Ms. Tatum and Mr. Parker. And while you're here, we're going to show a quick video of the work, PHS. Mrs. Tatum, we'll fill you in a little more about the work of the PHS construction class, but that is some of the work they did on her project. So, here is your $10,000.
So, we at Tate are in the little...
Yeah, we brought some layer.
A major overhauling of our outdoor spaces. And through our funds, we have been able to enhance our vegetable garden and have two new outdoor classroom spaces provided. And to receive this grant is just icing on the cake. We now can bring academic text outside into our outdoor spaces. And Tracy Hold, our media specialist, came to me with the idea of a story walk. And we just thought it was a great idea. Our plan is to use it for all curriculum, not just reading, but it is supposed to promote reading and movement. We know how important it is for movement for our students. So, we're excited to let this be utilized for all of our teachers and all of our students once we get the project underway. Obviously, the construction class with Mr. Wilson's help has already made the podiums. They've also helped make some picnic tables for our outdoor classroom and update our raised beds for our vegetables and our fruit. So, we are just so excited to get this going and be a part of the students at the high school giving back to Tate and just embracing that school community. So, we're just very excited about it. So, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is superintendent reports. Mr. Young?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start this evening with our financial update from Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Always good to see schools bringing in some more money for us. I appreciate that more than they know. Lets us do lots of special projects that maybe some of our restrictive monies can't do. So, good job to Ms. Tatum. We'll review our general fund. The revenue collected through the end of November 2022 is 53.22% of our budgeted revenue. Expenses were 32.73% of the approved budget. If you'll scroll down. You'll see some changes here to our consolidation of funds. Fund 1 is called Fund 150 consolidation. These funds, I'll remind you, blend federal and state funds. It gives us more flexibility, especially at the school level. I think the schools like that a lot. Cuts down on a little bit of red tape and paperwork for them. And we get a little more at the central office, but the schools get a lot more freedom and they can blend that money and have to have a wider array of use, I guess you could say. But we gained some additional funds. There is an amendment request on the table tonight. In that amendment, we are asking to blend some of the additional funds from federal money into Fund 150. It actually does not change the numbers you will see in the Fund 150 column. It only changes on the federal side because that's where it came from. So, the changes are all under special revenue. But all of those items went back. We had one item that went into people services that is a benchmarking item. The others all went directly into instruction. But now, this report reflects the expenditures through the end of November. Transfers have been made through the end of October. That means we transferred those federal monies and claimed them, and then we can ask for reimbursement for those funds. As always, we have no debt. Our capital outlay program, our SPOSS revenue for November was $752,051.51. Interest earned was $1,697.21. Our expenditures have slowed down for the time being to $466,697.64, which brought our month-end SPOSS balance to $8,676,820.98. Our special revenue funds, we've collected 19.49% of our budgeted revenue, and we have expended 45.82% of our budgeted expenditures. Again, those numbers will change a little bit if you choose to approve the budget amendments on the table tonight. Another item, if y'all have any questions about those items?
I don't know much. How much is still left to pay on the EVAC facility?
I do not have that off the top of my head because we recently paid a bill. I need to look at the numbers. I can send that out if you'd like tomorrow.
Whenever it's needed.
Just that facility?
Yeah, I was just wondering where we should...
We're getting close. The SPOSS audit? We are required each year, once our SPOSS revenue exceeded $5 million annually, we are required to have an additional audit on top of the Georgia Department of Education reviews...
Is this attached or...? No, you're under other audit.
It's the... I didn't see it. It should be attached.
Is it here?
Turn around.
Budget amendment.
Turn around.
Now, go to financial B. Go to B.
This is your stuff.
It is not attached. Okay, I will email that to y'all. We, the SPOSS audit was conducted, began right before Thanksgiving, ran through Thanksgiving break, and they concluded it the week after. They take our referendums. Actually, we had two open at the time we had expense in one. They go through every deposit, they go through expenditures, our processes, the information we share with the board, our approval procedures. There's quite a bit of information they gather. It's hundreds of documents. We do this, actually, they stay off-site. We have a secure shared collection system. But they come in and do this once a year now. They review and see if we're meeting the requirements, the things that were approved in the referendum. Are we using them as the voters of Pickens County approved? Do we have a proper procedure to share this information with the board? Are we keeping up with our paperwork? Do we have documentation proving every expense, every deposit? They went through, and I'm very happy to say everything went great. We are complying in all 14 categories. So, I thought it was attached. But I will make sure that we send an email out to you. Mr. Young does already have that report. We received it just right after Thanksgiving, so...
How much, how many, what is the amount of funds left in SPOSS 15?
SPOSS 5?
SPOSS 5.
We are under $2 million at this point. Once, and we have to track that. Once we expend the exact amount of money, and that includes every revenue we've received in any fashion, that is donations, interest we've earned, anything, once it gets to the penny, the amount that we have in SPOSS 5, we will then roll, start rolling the expense to SPOSS 6. So, we are not quite to that tracking every day, but we're close. As these larger projects start to finish up, you know, we've got, I think, a couple of larger items coming through. One's coming through tonight. We will just, we'll continue to track, and it will probably, I would guess it would be in this fiscal year, before June, that we will close that SPOSS. And we do have to close each one and open the next, so... Any other questions? That's all I have.
Amy, could you speak real quick about the, in that budget amendment, part of that was the paid for the background checks? Could you talk to them a little bit about?
Yes.
How that's reflected in that?
We had a request come in, could we reimburse staff members or directly pay for background checks? We get criminal background checks for each employee, and I believe it's mentors. We calculated, Dr., Mr. Parker, sorry, I just made you a doctor.
I'll tell you, they're having a war now.
Got something hanging on the wall there. Mr. Parker and I were talking, and we did, it's a little high on the calculation. We just wanted to make sure we had enough to cover. We've asked for a $15,000 amendment. That amendment is in the category that is reflected under central support services. We had a little extra budgeted in some benefits and instruction. That's the only place I ever have any extra money, it seems like. But I did move $15,000 from instruction to that 2,800 support category for this purpose. We've been already working on procedures on how that will work with the city of Jasper. Been in conversation with them so that we can do a smooth transition where the employees are not having to pay anything to be reimbursed. It would be a direct bill to us, so they will probably come in here to us. We've got a protocol that we're actually still working on, so, but we should have that in place this year. We'd like to begin January 1, just so we have a clean start when it comes to the billing that we're already doing.
Thank you. That's great. I'm glad we're going to be paying for criminal background checks. That can be a tremendous expense for some people and perhaps a detriment to them wanting to be employed here.
It's $55. Years ago, we had a grant that actually did help cover this. After a few years, the grant went away. We continued to support it, but then as we started having budget cuts and austerity reductions across the years, we did eliminate it. So, I do think this will be a positive thing in the process of trying to hire bus drivers and lots of other staff. This will, I hope this will encourage them to come to work for us.
Right. I'm glad we're doing that.
All right, giving the operations and construction update for Mr. Gillon this evening will be Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Madam Chairboard members, appreciate you having me out tonight. Just want to give you a few numbers, I put it in the report, about maintenance first. 767 requests through 12/6, and that three-week period for the last month, that since I updated the last month to 153 in the month of November, and that was basically a 16-day month for the, having the break built in. And just give you an update on how we're using these maintenance folks. Otherwise, we're depending on two of them to drive routes for us every day just to help with our shortage. We have one that's driving a PM route, and then we've had one come in to help us in the shop in the afternoon so that we have a CDL driver there for some of our maintenance guys that have had the bus maintenance technicians had to drive us. We need somebody who had to carry a bus out, have another CDL person to carry it out there. So, really, a team effort across multiple departments really makes me proud of what we have and the people we have willing to do that. As weather gets cooler, we're also going to be asking them to be out and about when we need to check roads and things like that. And they live in various spots in the county, so we're going to be using some of those guys for that, determine how safe the roads are and make sure we can get our buses through. And then also working with the Sheriff's Department and the Road Department, that's something that I want to make sure we do, and are in close communication because that, we have some treacherous places in our county. We send buses even when the roads are fine. But rain and, of course, snow this time of year, ice really makes it dangerous if we're not checking on very closely. So, appreciate all those guys. They really are working hard for us and all their other duties, keeping up the many facilities we have here in the county. So, hats off to those guys. Then, we had the monthly school, Clean School Award. Want to present that to the staff at PHS, the custodial staff at ABM there. Congratulations to that crew. Russ knows about that, and they'll be getting awarded there. So, Pickens High School picked up that award for the Clean School for the month in transportation. Yeah. Just like the same case in the maintenance department, currently depending on several of our office staff, fleet, technicians, maintenance personnel, like I said, even some school staff that are driving for us on, I mean, on a daily basis. Had a few of our folks out for surgeries and things like that, and just, you know, we lose people from time to time, and we're not getting them back in as fast. So, to give you an idea, I had Ginger help me run the numbers here and give us an idea of how many routes were covered. Just in the month of November, 16 school days, 129 routes were covered through either office staff, fleet technicians, or maintenance personnel, and then a couple of teachers helping out too. From time to time, we have a teacher at Dr. Flatt's school, Junior High. She was a driver for us in the past, and she finished her degree and got a teaching job over there. And she's been coming back to help us regularly, which I think is just fantastic, and I appreciate Dr. Flatt sharing her with us and others. These principals, always good to try to help us when they can. That's in addition to 60 routes that are doubled up during that time, that 16-day period, so you can do the math there. Several a day that we have doubling up. In other words, they go to the early release for the high school and junior high and then come back and get an elementary, middle route. So, we couldn't do it if we didn't have folks doing that, and that puts them on the road longer and longer days for them. But they're doing it, and we appreciate their dedication. Like most counties around us, we need, you know, quality CDL drivers, looking for them, always willing to interview and talk to anybody who's interested. So, please help us put the word out. Obviously, we want to be able to not only transport them safely to and from school every day, but we have a lot of trips outside of school that we want to get them to and from. So, we'll continue exploring ways and thinking outside the box, talking to other counties. Got a state directors meeting tomorrow up at the RESA that we work with our RESA directors and the state folks. And it's always good to get together with those people and see what's working and what's not. Good to have a network there. From the school nutrition?
Excuse me, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you go on, would you please tell all of those staff members how much we appreciate them pitching in and helping because we could not do this without them?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, everybody, everybody stepping up to the plate. I am just, I am in awe of listening to your statistics and how many different groups of people are stepping in every day to make this work, and I am just so grateful. Please, please tell them that for us.
I definitely will, and I would like to also add that this is not a new statistic.
No, they've been doing this for a long time, yes.
But, you know, most of the time, you know, everybody's willing to jump in, and sometimes it's calling them early in the morning, and sometimes it puts our routes behind because things come up and people get sick and kids get sick, and, you know, sometimes they need a doctor's appointment and have a day off too. So, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things that come up. As a principal, you can, you can put, you know, some classes together and ask somebody to give up their planning, but, you know, with driving a bus, you can't just put anybody in there. A little bit more challenging.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes, sir.
When we have certified teacher driving a bus, how do we pay them?
So, certified teacher or para, because they can't fall on the bus driver pay scale because that is a state-adopted pay scale that we adopt here in our county, and you have to drive so many days to be on that pay scale as far as your years of service. So, there's a flat fee rate per hour that they get paid, and that goes for if they work, like, take a sports team or band or someone to an extracurricular or a field trip, and that's the same, you know, per hour rate. They get paid by the hour. One thing we are looking at is changing the, possibly changing the rate from driving a field trip versus driving a route, like an emergency-type route driver that we need, like, hey, this afternoon, we really need somebody, we're short, and then stepping in to try to sweeten the pot and some of the folks that can help us. Because there are several teachers that have CDLs out there that they get finished with the school day, they can help us out. But we also need to make sure it's worth their time and worth their while to do so. So, I want us to revisit that.
Is there, is there a difference in pay between hourly rate, what they receive as opposed to what a regular bus driver receives?
Well, there is because the bus drivers are all paid on scale based on their years of service. So, we adopt the state scale, but then we have above and beyond that, and we start at $20 an hour for bus drivers, and they go on up depending on their years of service. And we put everybody on that, I think, in the last year or so, two years, Mr. Parker and Ms. Smith. I know Mr. Young, they all worked together to get this pay scale and show and make it competitive, and we are really competitive in our area for that, but we can't, we can't really say a teacher's been in the classroom 15 years, they got their CDL. It doesn't translate the same because that's the teacher pay scale versus the bus driver pay scale, which both are state pay scales, but they don't qualify for that by that hourly rate. So, it was, it was decided on back that there's an hourly rate base that they pay people to do extra like that. So, I want to look at that and see and make sure that we're, you know, making it worth their while or if they're not willing to do it because maybe the pay's not as good as they would like for it to be. And, you know, we can't really pay them their salary, you know, their hourly rate that they get for teaching, but make it where it's at least worth their while so that maybe we can attract some more of those people to help us out when we really get desperate and need them, or like a kind of emergency route rate or something like that. So, we've talked about that. I've talked to Ginger in our office there about that supervisor, and we really are looking at something there to try to sweeten the pot for them.
I would like, like, when it's emergency situations and after a regular teacher didn't drive a bus, and they make less than a bus driver would ordinarily make, that doesn't seem hardly fair.
Yeah, and like I say, it depends because we got teachers that are bus drivers on, you know, first year, and we got bus drivers that are, you know, 25, 30 years been driving. So, trying to find that happy medium that's fair for them and the drivers that is worthwhile for them to say, hey, we want to help you out because it might be that they tag up and one does the morning route and one does the afternoon route, and, you know, we might could make it worth their while there. So, that's something we got to look at, and we are looking at, and I think we could really help us because with the principals helping us out, which they always are great to do, and we borrow them their teacher, it might, it might take them out of their normal morning duty or afternoon duty or something like that, but them trying to, you know, help us out with it too, and everybody working together, it's been great, all of them have been great when we need them to help. So, anything we can do to make it worthwhile and get these routes covered because we do not want to have to call and say, hey, we can't, we can't cover this and get these kids transported today, it's not going to happen. We don't want to do that, and trying every way we can to keep that from happening. A lot of people depend on us, transport over 2,000 kids a day, so, half our students. From the school nutrition side, Ms. Thompson reported that their staff overall, their baseline staff, she calls it, running about 85%, and so they're, they're short. I know her and her office staff have been jumping in and doing whatever it takes in there to help run the school when they get down, and they do a phenomenal job. I've gotten to see them firsthand for a lot of years, being in the schools here for 14, 15 years. They do an awesome job and work really hard and really proud of what they've been able to do, even being short staffed. So, Ms. Thompson does a great job running that department, and I think she's the best there is, in my opinion, that is out there. We're fortunate to have her and keeps everything running well for us. So, there'll be an item coming up later with the pins for the Ag Center that I'd be glad to answer any questions about, of course, too. Is there any other questions I can answer about operations report?
We appreciate them fitting in too.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. A political update this evening will come to us from Dr. Goodman.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Young, Madam Chairboard members. We've been busy again this week trying to support all the teachers and administrators out in the schools and making sure that the students are getting all they need to reach proficiency, as we've been talking about all year. So, aligned with the strategic plan that we have so far, under Strategy 1.2, to implement a plan to increase literacy, we have grants provided for us through North Georgia RESA, and we have enrolled 15 teachers in the dyslexia endorsement and 11 teachers in letters training. That is not a typo, L-E-T-R-S, that's the name of the program, it's an acronym. So, I always try to let everybody know the reading people do know how to spell letters, but that's how they name their programs. Yes. In order to prepare the K4 teachers to provide differentiation and evidence-based strategies in literacy for all students to ensure that they reach their proficiency. Under Strategy 1.4, to identify areas of needed professional learning, our focus this month with the school administrators and academic coaches were, was professional learning communities. We worked on that and examined through the Plan Do Check Act cycle of school improvement, and then we had the administrators use their school improvement plans, put them down on thinking maps, which we've been rolling out through different schools that we've been mentioning. And they had the principals and the assistant principals and coaches work through that process to see how they could improve on the strategies they already have and see other ways, other school improvement goals that they could work on. One of the highlights we have for tonight, I had talked to Dr. Flatt, he focused their professional learning community on instructional planning, and they asked their teachers what they needed. And the teachers said, we need more time to collaborate. So, that's what they focused on. We want, the teachers are the ones who are doing the work with the kiddos, so we need to know what they want. They came together with protocols to plan out each month to ensure that they had adequate time to plan with each other and collaborate, and they did that first cycle in November using some protocols, and the teachers were really, really happy about it, so we're excited about that, and different schools have chosen different goals. In community engagement, we had the REACH ceremony last week, and that is realizing educational achievement can happen, the Georgia Scholarship. We've had it in this county, I believe this would be the fifth year because we have our graduating class, our first graduating class coming up this year of REACH Scholars. We recognized the five newest eighth-grade scholars. They are Emily Black, Mackenzie Childers, Emma LaFazio, Jaden Fitzgerald, and Skye Paredes. And they were able to invite their families, and we had some board members and community members. Mr. Bell from the high school was able to speak impromptu, it was great. And Mr. Young presented to the REACH Scholars their $10,000 scholarship that will be coming up. In order to reach that, they are going to attend school regularly, maintain good behavior, and prepare themselves for post-secondary school through good course performance. And they signed an agreement with their families to be able to do that, so it's a great ceremony. And they're also going to meet regularly with their REACH mentor and their academic coach. An academic coach in this sense is their counselor, their high school counselor. So, that's what they're calling that. We are really excited to have such a strong group of promising young scholars representing our 2027 graduating class. They happen to be all young ladies, and they all did a great job presenting themselves happen to be all young ladies, and they all did a great job presenting themselves. It was wonderful. We are currently looking for five new mentors to, to align with these young ladies. So if you're out in the community and you know anyone who can volunteer some time, Ms. Wilkins is over the REACH program, and she's reaching out as well to find five new members, mentors. Any questions on seeing out?
Are we going through EOC testing right now, Elise?
We are.
Is that the only testing going on this month?
We have benchmarking. So benchmarks are the local, local assessments that we use for formative instruction. And so in K8, we're doing the benchmarking mid-year so that we can look at our growth from August to this, for this semester. We've already started analyzing some data at some of the schools, and it's very promising. We're really excited about it. I know that Carolyn was out this week at all, all the schools. I think PJ's coming up, but she was at all the schools working with the administrative staff to look at their data. And then the EOC's math, we were able to finish today, or start today, and we're starting to get data. So statewide, the, the window opened this week, but we didn't start math until today. So the, the scores are already coming in from the state, so it should be turned around in a couple of days. So that's.
And that's nine through 12 on the EOC?
Yes, for the EOC. So that would be Algebra I for the math.
Well, the testing is going well system-wise?
Yes, it is. Okay. Any other questions?
And we will have those results hopefully in January or?
Yeah, they're starting to come down already. They, they aren't, we have to make sure that all kids take it, so if they have makeup days, it's not the full package, but we are starting to see results already. They're going to be coming in in the next couple of days, probably, right? Because they, they started on Monday in the state, and we've already gotten some statewide from other districts. So it should be in the next week or two.
I think I'm very excited.
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman. I thought Nurse Smith would give us a health services update. I know there was a time when Nurse Smith was giving us these things regularly, and everybody was on the edge of their seats. I hope it for the best. So it's good to see you under slightly different circumstances, Nurse Smith.
It's good to be here under slightly different circumstances. The school health team is here to support the educational process, and you have in your hand a school health report. I just want to make a few highlights of those, and I just want to thank the principals. They've worked really hard with us over some of these initiatives and the school health team. So new this year, this school year, as you know, we have employed two health aides in place of nurses because of staff shortages and no nurses applying. And I just want to give them a shout out. Rachel at the high school and Rach, excuse me, Rachel at JMS and Ashley at the high school, they're doing a phenomenal job there in school to be teachers. So they're very gifted organization and has helped to bring our clinics to the next level in that regard. And so I'm very pleased to have them on the team. They're just doing phenomenally. Our clinic visits, we've had 16,719 so far this school year, which is actually down from, since 2019. I contribute that to efficiency, and it's allowing us to focus our attention on the kids that need us the most. And believe it or not, we're seeing more children in the clinic with emotional upset and behavioral issues, and those students need time. So again, I thank the principals for working with our team to, to identify some areas that we can improve upon so that we can focus our attention on the kids that need us the most. Hearing and vision screenings is a new, a new initiative that we've done this year. I've been very proud of. I was not really sure if our school district has done them in the past. I've heard, yeah, some say yes and some say no. Some of the principals have told me they haven't, not, not at least during their tenure. And it's such a valuable initiative because we are catching kids who have vision and hearing problems that interfere with their ability to learn. And there's no telling the outcome of that if it were not caught. We've had some significant finds like dyslexia, muscle imbalances, and, and so the numbers you can see before you, but overall, and we are still conducting these screenings. We have more to do in January, February. We have a few more to do at Tate, and then we still have the junior how-to do. We have been screening second grade to eighth grade, and so far, 23% have need referral. That's 18% of the vision, which is 1% higher than the national average. So we're not that much off from the national average. And then 5% of the kids screened for hearing either need reevaluated or referred to for further care. We have sent written notifications to all the parents, and I'm very proud to say that we have vision resources for any child that fails the screening, that pays for an eye doctor and for glasses if they need it, and that, that those resources have been shared with families. Any questions so far? The immunization audit was conducted by the Department of Public Health. They come into our schools. According to Georgia law, all schools, as you know, must have either a immunization form or a, a disclaimer saying that it's a religious or medical exemption form. So one of those have to be on file, on file for all students, but they do come in and audit. They can audit any grade at any time, as you probably already know, but they've chosen most often to audit kindergarten, pre-K, seventh grade, and 11th grade because those are the grades that require immunizations at those significant years. But anyway, I'm really happy to report that the majority of the schools are at 100%, 98% and higher, which is phenomenal. And the staff have worked really hard to get compliant. Beginning of the school year, there were 500 not compliant students. I think the end of December, it was 340. So they have worked so hard, the principals and the, and those clinic workers. Health trainings, you can see the number of trainings, education that's occurring just to ready our staff for health emergencies and to help them identify kids who may have a health barrier to learning. And then I wanted to quickly share about Pickens Primary and Urgent Care. That has been a celebrated service by both staff and students. We have more staff utilizing that service than students, which is really interesting. But I've received many testimonials about how it's keeping kids in school and staff at work. And you can look at the report to see some of the statistics that Pickens Primary and Urgent Care shared with us. Most importantly, as Mr. Young mentioned, how COVID has improved in our county. Out of all the people who were tested for COVID by Pickens Primary and Urgent Care, only 21 were positive this school year. However, there were 120 cases of strep, which that's, that's been our, our biggest culprit this year that's interfered with learning. And looking ahead, we're, like I said, we're going to continue doing the hearing and vision screenings in January, February, and pending the MOU that you have to review and approve, hopefully as Reinhardt nursing students continue to help us with those screenings and to shadow in the clinics. We have scoliosis screening in March at PJ. And there are two designations that we're working towards getting. One is being heart-safe schools and asthma-friendly schools. And you've got some data on where we are in the heart-safe program. That's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions?
I see here that you're presenting to the Georgia Department of Education next week. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you for saying that, and that's a great win.
I read my reports.
For a district.
I can't speak for everybody else, but I read my reports.
So the department, the state Georgia Department of Education reached out to me. They had heard about the mobile health services that we're doing in our county. And, you know, you guys moved that through and approved that earlier this year. So not only are we celebrating that at the district level, at the state level, it's getting recognized. So they did ask us to present next December, next Friday, December 16th, to share about the outcomes and the telehealth services that we're doing.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, for moving that through.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nurse Smith. A lot of good stuff. That concludes my reports, Madam Chair.
All right. Definitely a lot of good things going on. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move into action items. First one is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gartrill. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is 5-0. Motion is approved. The next item is approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports that Ms. Smith presented?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the approval of the FY23 budget amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the FY23 budget amendment as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the approval to purchase livestock pens for the Barnes Family Agricultural Facility. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the livestock pens for the Barnes Family Agricultural Facility located, located at Pickens High School at a cost of $118,814.29 to be paid from SPOSS funds? Before we do that, do, Mr. Young, do you have anything you'd like to say, or Ms. Smith?
I can quickly, Madam Chair. We normally purchases such as this will come out of the contingencies that are left over, but this is a fairly large purchase, and if we will purchase with SPOSS dollars, we will avoid paying the fees associated going through our CEM as well as the taxes, and it'll save us over $10,000. So it will not delay the process at all. So easy way to save a little bit of money.
Okay. We all, we all like to save $10,000 when we can. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Green.
No, it's fine. I'm wrong.
Okay. Are you prepared to make that motion?
I'll make a motion. We approved that purchase.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gartrill, for the second. Is there any further discussion? No discussion. All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. The next item is the approval of Sports Medicine Services Agreement between Northside Hospital Incorporated and the Pickens County School District. Mr. Young, do you have anything you'd like to say before we vote on this?
I can give you a little more information, Madam Chair. This, of course, is the renewal or the agreement that we have with Northside for our sports medicine services. We've been very pleased with the quality of the service that they have provided us. And at this time, we do not have any other organizations that are willing to provide that service as a possible option. And so my recommendation to the board this evening would be to continue on with Northside.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the Sports Medicine Services Agreement with Northside Hospital as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion?
This is a 12-month agreement.
It's going to run a little longer than that. They want to get in on a cycle with the school year. So the next time it comes around for the board renewal, it'll be school year, end of the school year, they'll renew, go into the next school year.
So June of '24.
June of '24, yeah.
So that's, it's a year and a half, basically.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone else? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the school-based telemedicine services agreement with Pickens Care LLC and the Pickens Urgent Care LLC. Mr. Young, would you like to address that?
This is, this is part of services Nurse Smith was speaking about. Board approved last, I think it was last December, wasn't it, Nurse?
She had to step out.
Oh, the old I had to step out. But, yeah, this is, this is the program that the board approved la, I believe it was last December, and so the year has rolled around. I will applaud the board for its vision in, in getting that done. As, as Nurse Smith reported, we, we are, are on the radar down at the state, and they're actually using us as, as an example. Nurse Smith's going to be presenting in about a week down there, and others, other school systems are looking to us as kind of a, a model to, to fashion that. It's, it's been very successful. Hats off to Pickens Urgent Care, Primary Care for the service that they have provided. It's gone extremely smoothly. We're very excited. We do continue to talk to other vendors that can offer other avenues of, of support, but at this time, as far as what they do for us, my recommendation is to renew that for another year.
I'm glad we have progressed to being a positive example for the BLA to use instead of a warning to other schools.
It's always good when it's a positive example with those guys.
Do I have a motion to approve the school-based telemedicine services agreement with Pickens Urgent Care as presented?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Holland. Second was from Mr. Smith. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the approval of the MOA between Reinhardt University and the Pickens County School District. Mr. Young, would you like to expound on that a little bit?
Absolutely. There again, that, that involves something Pickens County has done, some sort of on the cutting edge, and it's time for that final year renewal. The Reinhardt School of Nursing across the street, another excellent partner for us. They continue to grant those full scholarships to Pickens County students that enter into nursing, which is a vital field for us and a field that Pickens County is, is struggling to meet demand. So we are asking for the board to approve that MOA for another five years, and we'll remind the board, thanks to Mr. Bell, he did not step out, but he still did. He, he presented to you guys a couple of months ago on the demand for nursing and our need to expand our programs down at the high school, which, which I hope moving forward, you guys will do as well. But this is, this is one leg in that stool of, of trying to, to meet that nursing demand. And so I would, I would ask that the board approve this MOA for another five years.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the MOA between Reinhardt University and the Pickens County School District?
I'll make it.
As presented. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Thank you, Mr. Holland, for making that motion and for Mr. Gartrill for the second. Is there any further discussion?
Is this the same term as the original?
Yes. No changes to the agreement other than the date. Yes, sir.
Okay. And this will be for five years. All right. All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item we have is request for final approval of policy IKBC, which is Material Harmful to Minor's Complaint Resolution Process. Do I have a motion to approve the new policy IKBC, Material Harmful to Minor's Complaint Resolution Process, as presented? This policy has been out for public review from the November 10th regular board meeting until now.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holland.
You all got to shut up the gang there.
Holland?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion on this? All right. All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is the interim superintendent
I will make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve and authorize the execution of contract with Dr. Janet Goodman to serve as interim superintendent beginning January 1st, 2023, as discussed by the board at executive session. I'll second.
All right. Mr. Green made the motion. Mr. Smith, second. This was presented and discussed in executive session. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor? Vote is 5-0. Motion passes unanimously. Welcome, Dr. Goodman. I'm sorry that we're going to be losing three board members. I think you would have enjoyed working with the five of us, but you're stuck with two of us anyway. All right. The next item is the approval of the January 12th, 2023, regular monthly meeting and call meeting. Do I have a motion to approve January 12th, 2023, as the date for the regular monthly meeting at 6:00 p.m. and a call meeting at 5:00 p.m.?
I'll move it, Madam Chair. Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gartrill, for the motion. And Mr. Smith made the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 10th, 2022, call board meeting at 5:00 p.m. and the November 10th, 2022, regular board meeting at 6:00 p.m., as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Second.
Mr. Smith made the second. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have not, Madam Chair.
All right. All right. Do you know why I don't stand up for even new things? All right. This is the end of an era. We are looking at the retirement of Mr. Tony Young and the resignation of Phil Landrum as our board attorney. And a month or two ago, I asked Mr. Young to just jot down a list of his accomplishments that I could present to you just as a reminder of all the things that he has done while he's been superintendent. And he defied my request and didn't do that. He said he would rather just have us say thank you and let it go at that. But as we were going through the action items tonight, just what we covered this evening, it was a pretty good idea of what he has done for this county. The nursing program, the sports medicine, the Ag Barn, so many different things. It's just the action items tonight. I would like to also mention his wife, who is here tonight, Kathy. Now, I think Mr. Young's wonderful, but he couldn't do everything he does if he didn't have a terrific wife at home. And let's just face it, it's a team effort, and I'm very thankful that Kathy was there to support him. So many of the things that we have, that they have done, has also been... The teamwork has been also Mr. Landrum. Now, Mr. Landrum wasn't able to stay for the entire meeting. He had to leave. So I can just talk about him, and he can't stop me either. But Mr. Landrum, too, has been a tremendous part of this team. And a lot of the things that he has done, we can't talk about publicly because a lot of that is confidential. So he has been a big part of this team effort. We can talk a little more about what Mr. Young has done. The main question that Phil and Tony have asked, Mr. Young and Mr. Landrum have asked is what is in best interest of the students? And that's what everyone who works in this system asks. What is in the best interest of the students? And I hope that both of you will look back on your time with Pickens County Schools with satisfaction. And I know I can say on behalf of the board, it's been a job well done. And to quote you, call me if you need me. Now, we have a gift here that you don't have to open in front of the board if you don't want to. But I jumped up and I was going to wait on Ms. Chope, and I just jumped up and started talking. She was going to go in front of me, so she's, I guess, going to be the final, do the final act here. But I apologize for that. I was just so nervous. I just stood up and started talking. Do you want him to open his gift now? I think it might be nice to...
That's probably up to him.
Okay. Open it later. All right. That's fine. It's been an honor, and I don't say that lightly. I've worked with a lot of people over my 42-year working life, but you are a man of integrity, you and Mr. Landrum both. And that doesn't happen, sadly, it doesn't happen often enough. But you're a man of integrity, and I am proud to have my name associated with you. All right. Thank you for everything you've done.
Appreciate it.
For Pickens County Schools. Just a picture, and I want Kathy up here, too, please. I'd like for you to come up. If you don't want to, if you don't want to, that's all right, but I'd like for you to... And then we're going to have Ms. Chope come up. She has a few words to say as well.
Hold it.
All right, Ms. Chope. My apologies. We let it all work down.
At this time, we would like to honor three of our board members who are completing their terms at the end of December. Mr. Tucker Green, Mr. Aaron Holland, and Mr. Steve Smith. On behalf of the Pickens County School District students, staff, and families, we say thank you. Thank you for your service and commitment you have provided. We admire your leadership in remaining focused on the most important stakeholder you serve, and that is the children who enter our buildings every day. As you complete this season in your life's book of adventure, we send you off with prayers for good health and good fortune. We would like to offer a token of our appreciation for all that you have given through your service to Pickens County School District. Thank you.
Don't forget to take your nameplate this evening as you go, for those of you that want to have that as a little token of the tour duty you served on Pickens County Board of Education.
All right. Does anybody else want to say anything?
I would like to thank Ms. Finley for the kind words. I thank the board for the confidence that it had in me, but more importantly, the staff. So they're the ones that did anything good that got done.
All right. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just say something real quick. It's been an honor serving with y'all. It really is. Doing what we can for the students, the community, and especially the staff. You've always been in my hearts from the moment I started in 2006 at Pickens High School, and there you will remain.
Yeah, I'd just say it's been an honor to serve these last four years. It's seemed like a lifetime. But I was thinking the other day, literally, and I am very young, but my entire life, with the exception of four or five years, has been in Pickens County Schools and as a student and or a board member. So this place is a special place in my heart, and that won't, that will not change. And it's been an honor to serve. There's a lot of great, great people. It's been a privilege working with and seeing things from this light. And I was trying to reflect on my time, and what a time we have had. But I want to say, I guess, any parting thought or advice for anyone in the system would be that remember and keep in the forefront of your mind our mission, and that is to educate and serve students. That's our job at the end of the day. And so many great things we were able to achieve during my four years that I'm proud of. And when I think back on those great things we were able to achieve, we were able to do it when we focused on students and we let personal agendas and things that matter to adults and outside distractions get out of our way. And we focused in on what's important to kids and how, what, you know, every decision we make, whether it be this board going forward or any staff member, every decision you make should be, how is this going to impact students? How is this going to impact student achievement? And if you do that, you'll achieve great things here in our school district. I believe that. That's going to be my hope and my prayer, that you will achieve great things. So thank you very much. God bless you.
It truly has been an honor to serve on the sport, and truly, we've had some difficulties that we never imagined. COVID-19, who does all that can... I ran for the board to hopefully see our vocational program grow. And I'd just like to thank Daniel Bell for all the effort you've put into... You've made my dream come true for this school. There are more children that are never going to go to college than are going to go to college. And at least we're, I'm sure we'd always offer them, but you're at least focusing on getting those children across that gap and getting them into something where they can make a good living and hopefully not leave our community. Thank you. One of the best decisions we've made as a board since I've been here is Daniel Bell. Thank y'all.
The next item on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Madam Chair, I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry. Just because you're not leaving doesn't mean you have to...
I'm on my way. You can't run, man.
Mr. Gartrill, would you have anything you would like to say?
I would like to thank Tony for his years of service. I would like to thank Mr. Landrum for his years of service. And I would like to thank the party board members for their years of service. And it's truly been an honor to serve with all of you. And to our staff, there are some changes, but our mission has not changed and it will not change, so bear with us. And one thing we completely forgot tonight, it's almost Christmas. Y'all have a very Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Our gift to you is we won't sing.
Or dance.
I don't know. Just because I can't sing don't mean I won't.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Mr. Smith made the motion. Mr. Gartrill seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is 5-0. Motion passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 7:06 p.m. Merry Christmas to one and all.